Hello. Sorry about that, I switched our... Hello? Can you get me? You got it? We switched our meeting times from 4:30 to 4:00, so I was up here yapping with Rebecca and realized we're now at 4:00 instead of 4:30. Yeah, it was my fault. I was yapping with Rebecca, but it was my fault. Um, are you... Daniel, are you filling in for...
Yes. I'm filling in for Daniel.
All right, all right. If you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilman Bates-Madison, District 3.
Present.
Councilman Joe Gebbia, District 4. Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Is this R. 1201 or something? That's all I got. All right. Opening remarks. I don't think I have any opening remarks, but we need to do the pre-regular meeting agenda review.
Yes.
Brad? She's off. Hello?
Hello, hello.
Yeah, I think you're there.
Am I there? Hello?
Yeah, just going to bring her closure to yourself. And pull it up a little bit.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go first to your public hearing agenda. And we'll look at RZ 13-01. Okay, this is the North Druid Hills, 1475 North Druid Hills rezoning of a 3.9 acre parcel located at 1475 North Druid Hills Road, Northeast Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, 30319, from R-75 to R-88 to allow for the construction of a 31 unit townhome project. Tax parcel number of the subject property is 18200-04042. Mayor and council, if I could just make this comment before Ms. Cannon gets started, just to review with you this case, and we've talked about it in previous work sessions. This particular case, and even the second one, RZ 13-06, we're going to ask that you all defer it for two weeks in order to... for staff to be able to look at documents that have just recently come into the department. The first one, which is RZ 13-01, and when the public hearing is called and we come to that item, if that announcement, if you all should agree, if that announcement could be made and you could ask for the motion so that we could defer that for two weeks. We have talked with the attorney representing this case. And just a little bit of detail, the revised site plan did not come in in a timely manner for us to be able to have it reviewed and to include comments, suggestions, or even conditions for that. So the applicant is in agreement to be heard on the 24th of September. The next...
Well, I think 17th of September.
That would be the 24th of September. Let me just double check, please. Yes, 24.
All right. Two weeks from today.
Correct.
Would we also suspend the public hearing as well? I mean, if there's people here who want to speak, do we...
I mean, you could. You could still open the public hearing, but just notify, you know, that you're planning to defer. It has been relied upon by the public that they know that this is a public hearing. I mean, Bill, what do you think?
You're certainly entitled to go ahead and have the public hearing on a day and suspend it if you want to have further comment. What's problematic in that is that if there's going to be a revised site plan that may have some... have taken into account some of the things that these people might want to speak to, it's that... that's just... that's the issue. They don't really know what they're speaking to because they've revised the site plan at a late date and...
But if they're doing... so you're saying if they have... if we open a public hearing today and they're commenting on it without having seen the new site plan, well, if we... but if we're suspending it, then they'll be able to comment again on that, the new site plan?
Thank you.
Right.
The other matter, too, is keep in mind that staff has not had an opportunity to look at the revised site plan and perhaps some of the citizens have, so we would not be able to respond to any comments that would result in questions from you all for staff.
And if I may add, in addition to that, we have the revised site plans that we haven't reviewed that you have not received, as well as comments from the public that have not been distributed to you that I do have hard copies of.
Okay.
Yeah, I know my preference would be that we simply defer the whole thing right at the beginning of the agenda so that we don't have a lot of people waiting around and they can hear, you know, have all the information for the public.
As long as we... as long as we make sure that we explain this so that... I just hate when people show up and then they don't have a chance to speak. We could make sure that...
We are just having trouble.
Procedurally, are we... I think what you're asking, I think is a good point. Procedurally, are we able to... Are we able to just make that announcement early on that those here for the public hearing?
Well, it's the first thing, right?
There has to be a motion. First of all, you're going to have to open the public hearing and then be able to address it unless a member of council wishes to make a motion to defer the items and therefore hold the public hearing on the 24th.
I'd like to have, like we did the last time, because if people want to speak, they can speak. If they want to leave, they can leave.
Right.
And then that gives them two times.
Would it be proper to... let the applicant usually speaks first anyway in the public hearing.
Correct.
So if they could explain that they've got a new site plan, well, of course, Susan can also explain that, too. So as long as we can get that information out right at the top.
Right.
Exactly the caveats that you mentioned so that people... But I'm with the mayor. I really think that people have made an effort to be here, and maybe this is the only time they can come if they want to say something. I say let the people speak.
Right. The only comment that I would make, and I discussed this with the attorney at length this afternoon, and that was, and I'm going to be very protective of you all, I don't want them to take advantage and try and negotiate from the podium, especially with your planning director not having the ability...
Who? I mean, the citizens?
The applicant.
How would they... tell me how that would happen.
They're going to talk... they're going to speak from the site plan that they've submitted. We don't know if the citizens have seen it or not, and the citizens may come up and may comment on that revised site plan, and you're going to have the applicant trying to rush to answer that in order to move the project along absent your planning director having any opportunity to fully vet what has been submitted. So that's my only caution.
Well, so if we're still deferring it, if we defer it, that won't matter, will it?
Well, no, in the end it won't.
Because we're not taking action on what they've negotiated.
No. But there may be a reliance upon the public if they've heard the applicant...
Well, just say that. We'll say, hey, don't rely on anything. I mean, that's something that...
Okay. All right. That's my only point. Because again, what they may be willing to agree to may not comport with your codes. That's the only... the only point of concern that I have.
So I think a disclaimer... several disclaimers, and that being one of them, that don't... we can't... we caution nobody to rely on any negotiations if that starts happening.
Right.
Now, remind me, we have not had a public hearing on this first one before us, right? We have on the second one, and we suspended it.
Yeah, we suspended... was it the second one suspended, not the first?
Yeah, the one on Roxborough. So the more I think about this, may... I'd be willing to suspend... I mean, not have the public hearing on the Druid Hills property, explaining why, but you could also... would it be possible that if somebody has come here who can only make it today, they could say their piece at the public comment part?
Absolutely. That's just what I was going to say. Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, mine. I'd very much like to see these things not get split up, and I think there's some parties who, you know, are expecting a deferral. I think that the city may have talked to the applicant about their needing more time, and so they may not have all of their staff, you know, the applicant may not have all the people here to hear it. I think that just for the process, I'd much rather see it as a standard process all along where we have a public hearing, and I think a very good way to let people who are here who've shown up and want to say something is just put them in the public comment.
We'll just announce that we're... that the public hearing on this and the action on this is being deferred, but in five minutes, you can use the public comment section to make any comments. You'd like anything that was on the agenda.
Yeah, that's a great way to do it.
And the same with the second?
The same with the second one, RZ 13-06, and just quickly, just to give you...
Hold on. One second. Before we leave that, does anybody else, Jim, or anybody have any comment about the Druid Hills thing before we... Joe, I know you were trying to say something, but your mic...
I guess my only question, do we have a list? Can we get this revised site plan out to the residents in the area? Do we... how is it going to be distributed to them? You know, if we want them to come back and comment on it at the next public hearing, how are they going to see it?
Well, that's part of the whole point. It's not on the website. We have it. You don't have it. I have a hard copy here, as well as the additional comments that we received last night and today from the public that I'm... I don't know if you want these distributed to you in the work session or in the regular meeting, but that's the whole point. It's not on the web. We haven't reviewed it. You haven't seen it.
When will it be on the web?
Well, after tonight.
So it'll be in there so we can tell folks you can see it on the website tomorrow?
No.
We have to... we still have to review it. Public Works has to review it. They're... it's not going to be on the website tomorrow.
Okay. When do we know it will come? How long do you think?
It should be on the website no later than the Wednesday preceding the Tuesday meeting for September 24th.
So it gives them basically a week?
Correct.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Right. And if it's reviewed sooner than that, it'll go up immediately.
If somebody can make that point, you know, because I know that there seems to be a couple of active...
Yes.
...adjacent residents that, you know, and I don't want a plan to get out that's not fully baked.
Right. And I don't know when you want these. I can give them to you now or whatever you prefer, but I have them.
I'd rather that they get them in the package of distribution. That way, because I think we're going to get more, and I'd rather you have everything.
Yeah. One other request is that right after we do the... defer the public hearing, can we go ahead and move the old business on the deferral of the ordinance right up behind that so that those people who are here can hear for sure that we've deferred this matter and then they can go? Just because we'd have to go through all these other reports, presentations, public comment, agenda announcements, and all this other stuff. I'd prefer to go ahead and get those issues so that... as a courtesy to the attendees.
I think we need to... we've talked to staff, somehow figure out how we can do that for all of our public hearings going forward so that we hear it, we have comment, we vote on it, we move to the next one so that each one is sort of self-contained. And I realize that we're still trying to work through some of the software, the clerk software, and it's doing... it's got its mind of its own, but...
Correct.
You know, it does seem to work better because then if we have a contentious one, we can move it forward, clear the room, and move on to the others. So, yeah, if we can handle each one, figure out how to do that, I think that'll be better long-term.
That's exactly my plan, and that is to have the public hearing agenda items first. You'll hear the public hearing. The planning director, if it's a zoning matter, will sound that into the record with the recommendation. The applicant will get up. The public is called to the podium. You will then close the public hearing after you have your back and forth, close the public hearing, deliberate, and then make a motion to either approve, deny, approve with conditions, defer, whatever action you want to take. So that way, then, that matter is dispensed upon and then dispensed with, and then you go to the next item. So that's what we're trying to get to. Right now, the software has allowed us to include a public hearing header and then saying "See public hearing," but we're going to get there, I promise you. Just give me a meeting or more, and we'll get there.
So for today, though, can we do as Bates has suggested, just move...
And that was our intention, that we were going to walk through that. I was talking with Mr. Iyer earlier today that you will, once you get on that item, we're going to...
Need a motion.
...complete it.
All you need to do is make a motion to amend the agenda, to move the item up to the next... to the next item after the agenda.
Right after the public hearing?
When you open up your city council meeting, when you get to approving your agenda, you'll just... you'll just go ahead and make a motion.
Approving the agenda.
Yes, that's right.
So we'll have pledged allegiance, open the public hearing, defer it...
Defer it for the first article, for the first...
All I would do is that after you defer those two, someone to make a motion to the mayor to amend your agenda, to move items...
One and two.
One and two under old business forward to the next items for purposes of deferring. It'd be a second, a vote, you'll change your agenda, then you'll make your motion to defer. If that passes, then it's done, and everybody can go home.
All right. So kind of jumped the gun on the second one there, but we're talking about the first two, but this is the number two, the Artisan Homes on Wright Road, Wright Avenue?
Correct. Wright Avenue and East Roxborough Road.
You're recommending deferral on that.
We're asking for that to be deferred as well.
And you've been in touch with the attorneys on both of these?
The attorney has been notified that we were going to recommend deferral.
Can you say why?
Yes, I can. There are a host of issues, and at the last meeting, I know we were all struggling, you all were struggling, to find a way to make this project fit within the constraints of a previously platted property from years and years ago. And remember, at that meeting, you heard from the community development director that by approving the res... the plat... or the rezoning, excuse me, the rezoning on what is previously platted property, then immediately created the need for variances. And we talked about coming back to you all with an ordinance where we could allow concurrent variances in rezoning cases to be heard only by the mayor and council. So as a result of the discussion that you all had as to what do we do with the right-of-way that the DeKalb County Thoroughfare Plan calls for for East Roxborough, which is 100 feet, and in this case, it would be 50 feet from center line, what do we do about that? Because the nature of this platted property and the structures that the developer intends to locate on the properties, there's very little room, in fact, there's no room left for them to accommodate the accommodation of the 100-foot right-of-way by increasing the right-of-way from what it is now to 50 feet from center line. By doing that, the houses, the front porch was... could be five feet from the back of right-of-way. And so there was a concern by the applicant to what that would do with their product type and what that would do with their development. The idea was then, well, perhaps the alleyway that services the backs of those houses that front on East Roxborough could be narrowed, pushed back, so the houses could be pushed back and then enter into what was and is a subdivided lot that is housing and accommodating the driveway that enters into the backs of those homes. Doing that, you're furthering or complicating the issue with the plat because then you have an encroachment into a subdivided lot, and as I understand it, the ZBA can... has no power to vary those lots. Okay, that's correct. All right. So what's happening, in a nutshell, is we're trying to shoehorn a development into a previously platted subdivision that had no understanding at the time of plating that this type of product would be... tried to be located on the property. So our advice is to the applicant and our suggestion to you all is that a meeting is scheduled between the community development director and the applicant and their attorney to talk about a better-suited, already-listed zoning classification that would be better sought to file for a rezoning and not create a situation where we now have it that's so complicated that one correction creates two more problems. So I think, you know, with trying to avoid the furtherance of more variances, which would require you all to wait for an ordinance to be created and adopted to allow for the concurrency of a variance and a rezoning to be heard by you all at the same time. So we think this is the better approach. This way, under a new zoning classification, the developer can accommodate that additional right-of-way into the overall plans without worrying about now am I encroaching in another lot and what am I doing there? So that's the reason for the request for deferral. The good news is we have support from the community as we understand it for, you know, the product type. We just need to be sure we have the right zoning classification that can best regulate this development.
Makes sense. Any questions about the reason for deferral?
And you say you have talked to the applicant on this one?
Well, there was an email exchange that was going back and forth between Ms. Cannon and the attorney for the applicant.
So we don't know if they are happy with that or upset about it?
I've not heard that.
Okay.
I just hope also going forward, and we had this conversation earlier, that we look at site plans that are consistent with the zoning that's being requested, and I understand that this is pre-platted and those types of things, but, you know, they've got enough land out there. If you look at the overall landmass that they've assembled to come up with a... whether it's an R-60, R-8, whatever category they choose, they can come up with a reconfigured subdivision that meets the intent. I have a real concern with concurrent variances because I think it opens the door for some odd-looking site plans at the end of the day, and if we can try to stick within the context of existing zoning rather than trying to rewrite the zoning for each case that comes before us using variances and other manipulations of the zoning code, I think we'll be better off long-term.
Right. And I agree with you, and we'll be talking about the text amendment for concurrent variance, and I'll just say it now, and we can save the time for later. The purpose of concurrent variance and rezonings is not to manipulate the zoning code or to do anything of the sort. It is to provide you a mechanism for allowing a rezoning to take place that by the mere action of that creates a hardship. And we have a lot of properties that have been previously platted, and unfortunately, what happened, and it's indicative of many communities, especially during, you know, fast growth, heavy growth periods where old neighborhoods, old properties were platted and recodifications of zoning ordinances took place, and there wasn't a look back of, wait a minute, how does that affect all these other properties? And so therefore, you know, we have to look for means in which to enable you all to look at the whole picture. My fear is to allow a rezoning to come forward, for you to consider it, for you ultimately to approve it, and then you have set up an expectation and you have usurped the authority of the variance, the zoning board of appeals, to fully and objectively review a hardship because in that particular case, you all have created the hardship, not a fiscal feature, but by your mere action. That's why many local governments, jurisdictions have concurrent rezonings and variances because it allows you to clean up an infraction that you create when you're trying to do a good thing.
One question. Do you anticipate that in the next year or so that we will take a look to revise or rewrite our zoning code? I mean, I wish we could take a year off and just clean it up, but it just ain't going to happen.
Well, first of all, I'm going to thank you for that perfect segue. You know, we're getting ready to launch the proposals for the comprehensive plan, and in the 2014 budget, and Ms. Klein, please make a note of this, we do want to include funds to recodify the zoning ordinance. As soon as that comp plan is getting near approval, we want to be able to solicit four proposals because we're going to have to do that. And that's what happens. This is exactly... this kind of case on East Roxborough is exactly what happens. A comprehensive plan is developed, and the excitement of new types of land use characters and opportunities, and then there is a rush to get this done, and nobody looks back to say, well, what... are we making sure we're cleaning everybody up and are we writing those properties that have previously been approved? So this is what we'll be doing, and we will be looking back. We'll do that. And so 2014, soon after the comprehensive plan comes before you all, we hope that that's going to be sometime in the spring, and right after that will be the recodification of the zoning ordinance, and we hope to have that completed by the end of the summer of next year. So we will be very fast-paced in moving that forward quickly.
Thank you. All right, and so the next two items, obviously, we're going to defer those.
Correct.
All right. All right. On the new business section?
Yes. The budget amendment. Ms. Klein, this is the amendment to current fiscal year budget, and you are getting closer and closer to becoming experts in budgeting because, as I told you before, once we get through the mid-year budget adjustment, we will be then starting on the 2014 budget in October, which you will see in November. We have a lot of good news to report. You all have received that. Many of you have had meetings with Ms. Klein. A couple of things I do want to at least point to your attention as she goes through what has been budgeted and then what is the proposed adjustment and what that amended budget would look like if you should approve it. We are operating, again, with your approval, we will be operating on a $15.8 million budget for a city that is only nine months old. I'm very pleased, very proud, and very excited to present to you a million-dollar reserve fund that we are recommending for you to review. We do have a couple of adjustments that we're making in the police department, a few other adjustments that we're making in the mayor and council budget, and I think that highlights the big ones for changes, and these are not big changes, they're just slight adjustments. And remember, this is not to review the mileage rate. This is... this budget reflects the 2.85 mils. This is not to create new spendings from the standpoint of looking at new revenue sources. It's looking at what we currently have, the revenues that we expect to still continue to receive by the end of this fiscal year, and how we adjust those figures.
So I don't have a whole lot to add. The main... the departments that had changes are mainly minor and housekeeping. The big ones are the parks and the police, and we knew that all along, that those would need a budget amendment at some point in time. On the revenues, I was able to change some of those since we got the billing from DeKalb County. I have a firm number on like tax billings, the stormwater, anything that they bill on our behalf, so I had some more solid numbers on that. The big thing in the revenue is I've moved in the three and a half million that we originally budgeted in the host tax, moving it to a fund by itself to restrict it because it's very restrictive on what it can be used for, so...
Bonnie, could you try and get that mic closer to your mouth, please? Brad?
Just push the whole mic forward.
I can stand closer to it.
Daniel, do we have a screenshot of this?
No, we don't.
Okay.
No, it would look just like your handout. I have some extra ones.
I would like to.
Okay.
I've got one.
It's in your packet on page 149, in the regular meeting packet.
That's probably an abbreviated version. That's the resolution. Does it have the details by department?
It doesn't have all the details. It's got the resolution.
The resolution will just have the totals, like for the funds, one for the revenue, one for expenses, and then the three new funds that we're creating. This is very routine. I mean, some cities do a budget amendment every month, so I think this is the first chance we've really had a chance to stand back and look at how we're really operating. I envision at least two more before the end of the year. Any questions? Or, I mean, like I said, this is... except for the parks and the police, most everything else is cosmetic, the most departments had a decrease, and that's mainly for build-out costs and machinery that we ended up not needing.
Good. Coming back up to a related item, that the... on the consent agenda, we've got the approval of the police car financing. We discussed this. Question came up afterwards. The approval that we're doing here is city council approving to pay the Brookhaven Finance Corporation for... and what amount is it that we're paying?
No, that is allowing us to move forward with the Brookhaven Bank, providing the funding for the police car.
But isn't that a function... But isn't that a function, and, excuse my, isn't that a function of the Brookhaven Finance Corporation?
Yeah.
Who then is paid back by the Brookhaven City Council?
In essence, right.
And what is that amount, and where is it? Is that out of the host, or where does that?
Well, as soon as I get an approval on the financing, whether it's Brookhaven Bank or something else, in a governmental fund, that say two and a half million is what I'm thinking, it'll be a revenue and an expenditure, so it will have no effect on the bottom line. The repayments after we get the loan in subsequent years will likely come out of the host.
Okay.
I'm a little confused on the answer to, I think, what Jim was asking, and this may be a legal question. If the purchase and, well, leasing and the repayment of the police cars is going to come under the roof of the Brookhaven Finance Corporation, that's not an action that we would take tonight, right? We would have to have a separate meeting called for that?
The budget approval is the approval of what you're gonna do to give to the finance corporation.
Okay.
The finance corporation has to have their own meetings, you're exactly correct.
Okay. So tonight, we are just going to approve the financing mechanism, and then we just present that to the finance corporation?
We'll have a postponed meeting.
So then the budget would need to be amended?
That's definitely another amendment.
Prior to, or I guess subsequent to, or somehow we need to reflect that? Do we need to reflect that in our approval?
In your motion, tonight, if you would.
That we include the reimbursement of the Brookhaven Finance Committee, or Finance Corporation? Corporation, thank you, for the lease purchase of the police vehicles?
That would be good.
Okay. I, thank you, I was trying to put the...
Yeah, I mean, it's, their lawyers and our lawyers will talk. It has to do with not being able to pass a year-end without, you know, reinstating the loan each year. With corporation, it could be more continuous.
Right.
Even though it's really the city, corporation has no money, so it's the city doing it.
So what's on the agenda for city council tonight is what? Under the consent agenda, what is it that we're approving?
You're approving, using, selecting the Brookhaven Bank as our, no pun intended, vehicle to finance the police cars. So they are going to be the bank of record that will make the loan available, and then that line of credit will be transferred to the Brookhaven Finance Corporation.
But, excuse me, I gotta return. Aren't we then co-mingling the approvals because the council is approving the Brookhaven Bank, which is actually under contract with the finance corporation?
We have no contract yet.
But I'm, ultimately, yeah, eventually. I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out how the pieces and parts fit together, and whether it's the council that's approving the lease purchase, or whether we're approving repayment of the lease purchase. I know that's a fine line, but I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind.
First of all, you have to have a financial entity to provide the money for us to pay the dealerships back. Okay? That's first and foremost.
And that will be, who are the two parties on that note or on that lease purchase? It'll be Brookhaven Bank and whom?
Ultimately, the Brookhaven Government Finance Corporation.
Okay.
But as I'm dealing with the bank now, it's just the city council, it's just the city of Brookhaven. But when the final papers are done, it will be the corporation, which are you guys also?
So this is more like enabling legislation, or I don't know what, there's another name?
I think it's just another vehicle to...
I understand what Jim...
It's, yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I'm trying to slice and dice it too much, but I guess I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind.
I think we will need another meeting to make sure the corporation...
Because you're negotiating on behalf of the council now, but the documents will be signed by the corporation.
Ultimately.
Right. So I think, man, I don't think there's anything, you know, wrong. I just need, for the record, just to be safe and clean, we just gotta make sure that the clear line of authorities are on the record clearly.
Right. Because you're establishing a line of credit that the finance corporation is going to use.
Right. I got you. So we're enabling the finance corporation to have the line of credit with Brookhaven Bank, but you're not negotiating with the corporation, the bank right now, you're negotiating with the bank on behalf of the council.
That's it.
Yeah. I don't think they even care, other than, makes it cleaner for them to have corporation that doesn't have to reapprove everything at the end of the year.
Sure. I got you. It makes sense.
I'm not seeing the paperwork for that car financing. I thought it was online, but I'm not seeing it in our packet. Could you just remind me what the terms of that?
Okay, they offered a couple things.
Bonnie, can you pull the microphone out, please?
A three-year and a five-year repayment. The three-year was prime minus 25 basis points as a floating rate. We would have the option of converting that to a fixed rate if rates made it beneficial to us at our option. 90-day drawdown period, repay interest only, and repayment would start on that fourth month. So, and they have bent over backwards. They really have been accommodating.
Proud of Brookhaven Bank. Good job.
They've been awesome, yeah. I mean, I dealt with the big guys, Bank of America, PNC, SunTrust, every, the salespeople that I talked to, they were just excited, oh yeah. But then when they got to their credit people, like, no, they don't have any financial statements. It's real hard to repossess 50 police cars.
Especially when there's armed officers inside of them.
Yeah.
From a procedural standpoint, Bill, when the finance corporation gets together and has this deliberation, is that the end of a council meeting? We would cancel the council meeting, or?
We can set it, we can, as long as we give them a public notice, we can have that hearing anytime we want to. It's probably functionally easier to have it at the beginning or the end. Just like we've set, we've set three different works, a work session, a public hearing session, and a regular council meeting here tonight. We can have a finance corporation meeting in between, or at the end, or at any other point in time, or we can have it on a date certain without anything else happening, it's just whatever's easier for the council and their alter, you go to the finance corporation.
Okay, great. So this money, just as a clarification, Bonnie, is it utilized 100% for police cars?
Yes, and all the bells and whistles on the cars.
Right.
We got the, the dealer has absorbed the cost of all the lights and computers and all that stuff.
Wow.
And he's gonna bill us all together, and then he'll take care of like subcontractors, but we'll have invoices for all that.
Excellent.
Yeah, it is, very good deal.
Did you ever, did the bank, or did you get a chance to talk to them about the, it's a floating rate, at what frequency is it?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
And we also had that option to convert it to a fixed rate, so, you know, worst case, we could convert it to fixed, or we could refinance it. There's no pre-penalty on the paperwork I've been dealing with. And it's just three years, so I don't think, if rates just totally tanked, we'd be in good shape with the floating. If they went crazy, if somebody else could beat it, we could do that.
Marie, for the record, can you please reiterate the benefit to the city of us taking this route of using the finance corporation?
Oh, absolutely, thank you. The finance corporation is empowered and has the authority to enter into long-term leases. So this way, we can...
Whereas the city could not?
The city cannot. You cannot, you cannot borrow anything more than what you can pay in a year.
Right.
So the finance corporation is allowed to go beyond that, and as a result of that, can better negotiate rates. So this is just one opportunity and one piece of what the corporation can do. You all can enter into long-term leases for real estate, for improvements, for city hall. So it gives you the ability to be in a better negotiating stance, especially when we're talking about leasing of real estate. That's always a slippery slope, because you can get a better rate if you're a long-term tenant, but if you're the local government, you can't obligate yourself beyond 12 months, but a finance corporation can.
Is this something unique to Brookhaven, or is this a common practice in cities?
Oh, no, this is a customary practice with...
Yeah, we had one in McDonough.
Right.
Sometimes you'll see downtown development authorities and things like that. It's just a conduit to facilitate loans.
Thank you.
I just have, I just have one other question, but I just wanna make sure I understand, because the police cars, which we see now everywhere, which is fantastic, don't really appear on the budget. Is that because we don't own them yet, or?
Well, I mean, I guess we own them. I was trying to get, tie down the number better, but, I mean, if you guys want to, if you wanna approve the amendment with adding that to it, I could do that. That wouldn't be a problem.
But we do, but we're paying it back with the host money, which is allowed for capital expenses, using the financing through the Brookhaven Bank, and it's all under the roof of the finance corporation.
It'll be on the city's books. It'll be in this, well, at least, yeah, it will. Like the revenue on a governmental fund, that two and a half million, say that's the amount of the loan, you'll see a revenue item for that, financing sources in, and then an equal amount financing sources or capital expenditures out. So, I mean, change it to total that first year.
Will that be in the general fund, or will it be in the host?
No, that, this initial transaction will be in the general fund. As the repayments are made, that'll come out of that.
You'll see that as an item on the host budget.
Right.
So for today's purposes, should we make that amendment today, or just let it be?
That's fine.
I think we should.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna resolve, if you're gonna negotiate and resolve in the next couple of weeks, and then at least you can tell them that it's been approved.
Okay. I think in the back of my mind, I didn't wanna jinx this financing thing. I've been working on it.
But do we wait, I mean, you know, if...
No, that's fine. No, I think...
Do we wait till the next meeting and do it after we do the finance corporation approval?
No, I'll do it amended schedule. That should be the only change, plus revenue, plus expenses. So it'll still be a amendment.
So when we offer the amendment, should we, should we attach a specific number to the police cars, or just say we'd like you to reflect the amount?
I think that would be sufficient, yeah.
What, reflect on the amount or the actual number?
Well, I would, I would say the 2.5 million.
2.5 even, or is there some change in there?
Well, I don't have a bill. I don't have a bill from the dealer. I don't have...
Can we just say, reflect the amount of what the invoices are that reflect the purchase of the cars?
Okay.
That way, it's only for the cars and for the outfitting thereof.
Okay, that's fine.
Different question, same topic. So we've capitalized at least three years, but we're expecting five-year lifespan on them. What's, what is our repurchase plan, you know, so you don't get hit with that, you know, in three years or five years? You gotta do the whole thing all over again?
Well, I would work with the police chief, but normally, I think we're anticipating five-year life on these cars. So after we get done paying for them, we still got a little bit of time, and we'll do a schedule like a life cycle rotation, like so many cars drop off each year, and that will be in our capital budget each year, replace this many cars. I mean, usually in a city, you've got some that are older than the others, so I don't know how this is gonna work, but...
And sometimes too, and many times, with other cities, when a patrol car rolls off, it'll go to another department, and as you know, we are leasing other vehicles where we can use a police car because it's not needed for high-speed chase, it's just needed to make an inspection. Many governments will take those police cars and get another five to six years of life out of them. So they get recycled, and so what happens is they get repainted, and the only downside is if you're sitting in the backseat doing an inspection, somebody has to open the door for you.
And it's not real comfortable.
No.
Can we give them out to neighborhood watch?
Yeah.
Can we, can electus bid on them, to buy them?
Well, you can, you know, surplus them, and they can be made available for sale.
I'd be careful.
You know who likes to buy them, are taxicab drivers?
Yeah, right, they love them.
They know they've been maintained.
I actually had a new appreciation for this this week. I was at a town hall meeting with the DeKalb interim CEO, and he was lamenting the fact that over, he said over half of the DeKalbs' police force vehicles had over 100,000 miles, and that 80,000 was really sort of the recommended replacement, and they were, they were hoping to find some money in their budget. But he expressed quite a bit of envy for us new cities who, he's heard about this, taking the cars home, and how that extends the life of the vehicle, plus we have the brand-new cars. I mean, it was concerning because people were actually asking questions about, is it safe for this recent fatality of the, of the police officer? Did that involve an, you know, an unsafe vehicle? It turned out it didn't, but it's, you know, that's a real concern that I'm, I'm blessed to not have to have.
All right. Good job, Bonnie.
Last question, Jim? I just, I had a question on one of the line items, and it was something we had talked about earlier, the, I'm looking at the IT schedule. We had the half main budgeted, we've got roughly 225 left, 275 spent, 225 left. I'm just curious what, what's remaining that forces us to keep that so high?
The big one is a records management system, which is a scanning thing, and it will keep all our documents electronically, and I don't know how much that is, but I can remember, well, here's Daniel. That was one of them, right?
There were a couple of big items that were included. One is all of the hardware and equipment for the off-site disaster recovery center. Currently, our backups are being offloaded to Interdev and being stored there on Interdev's hardware. We're gonna be shortly purchasing hardware and putting it into a data center downtown for the city's backup and disaster recovery center. And there's also some expenditures for the centralized video management system that will be going in, that was a $50,000 expenditure. There were some line items in our budget that were being reallocated, but the $500,000 budget was gonna be pretty much fully utilized.
When do you anticipate this?
We're hoping to order the equipment for the data center in the next week, and we're anticipating going live in the data center in October.
The, and I'm not gonna question you, I just, I've read where cities do sort of a sharing agreement with a city across the country for management, that type of stuff. Is that something that we've looked at, sharing facilities with others? So if, you know, if a disaster hits Atlanta and may wipe out everything, is there, is there a second offsite facility that keeps the stuff a little further away?
We're investigating some of those, some of those options, but it is a little bit difficult with all of our facilities being, you know, up in the air in terms of where they'll be permanent, and, you know, typically, they want two-way sharing agreements, and our current facility, we're really pushing the edge of what we can put into our current space in terms of heat and power. So some of those issues, you know, we'll continue to investigate as we're operating, but it may, we may be looking at next year or further down the line.
And, you know, you know, I love, I love you and I love the IT, you know? I prefaced this, but, but I very much want our city to be cutting-edge IT. But in our startup year, I want us to explore every single option possible, you know? I don't mean to micromanage the IT department at all, but monthly software as a service, I'd rather pay a premium for some of the things that we do from an IT standpoint in a monthly payment rather than purchasing equipment in our startup phase, because we have so many expenses as a startup city, in particular, you know, all the plans that we've got to produce for our parks, transportation, and comprehensive plan. Any opportunities that you see to do monthly services instead of hardware equipment purchases, please try and do it.
Absolutely. I think we've investigated a lot of those options as they've come available, but we're also, you know, looking at the long-term expenditures for the city to try to get the best deal and the best infrastructure in place, so that we aren't putting Band-Aids in place and having, you know, departments struggling to operate properly, struggling to provide reports to you in timely manners, so that we just keep pushing out those deadlines and make it longer and longer and longer before we can have an integrated interface where we'd be able to provide, you know, what you all and the citizens are looking for, and make that information available to the public.
True, true. I think, you know, it would be a very, you know, this is an operational thing, but I would love to, you know, I think if you can provide some kind of analysis showing the cost-benefit analysis of those scenarios, I mean, so here's your, here's your monthly cost. Do you want to, I mean, there is gonna be a profit if you outsource this stuff, they're building in their profit and the cost of outsourcing and their equipment costs. But if we can show that on a spreadsheet, I think that you'll eliminate sort of these concerns of, well, is this a right investment now? And if we're paying, you know, or if we're saving money in the long term, that's very, that'd be very useful to see, you know, to actually see the actual numbers.
Would that be something you could do, just a cost-benefit analysis with comparison between purchase and...
I think we can, we can investigate. I think we can, we can investigate something to try to put something together for you, but at the same time, some of the numbers may not be directly realized. I mean, if you get five different systems that are hosted and you're paying premium for a hosted service for community development, a hosted service for Public Works, and a hosted service for the Police Department, and then you're wanting information correlated together between all those systems, then I, I'm not certain how you can exactly show that benefit in a spreadsheet of being able to show that, that information correlation when you have all these offsite databases that you can't really tie together.
True, true.
So when we're tying, say, the, the records management system the Police Department uses into the ticketing software that the court uses, into the finance software that the Finance Department uses, and the permitting software, you know, it, it becomes very difficult when you look at separate offsite hosted software packages to be able to get that type of integration that your departments are looking for. So you want to be able to, you know, verify that person has an active business license before you issue them a-
Well, that should be in your cost-benefit analysis, that disadvantage that you're talking about. That's what I would-
Yeah, and I, and I'd say, I agree with you. Like, like I said at the beginning, I love IT. I think that I want the city to be leading-edge on IT. I just, the citizens and, and the public needs to be aware that we've explored both opportunities. And, you know, right now, I know we want to get to the point where all of our department's systems speak to each other, but right now, they don't. And I think that there are some, I mean, I think the potential's there for them all to speak together if we've got the same sequel services and, you know, data warehouses. But until we get there, you know, are there ways that we can save money as a city? And you'll be a hero if you, if you find ways for us to save money. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, alcohol permitting in parks?
Yes. We need to talk about- Were there no other questions on the budgets? We're done. Okay. DeKalb County has permitted the use of alcohol in parks. And with some of the special events that we are going to host and what we still anticipate, whether it's a movie night in the park, or it's a concert in the park, or just recently, the most successful launch of the food court, excuse me, food trucks. You know, there's a vendor that's part of the food truck group that does offer beer and wine. And so we don't have a policy from you all, and I'd like to have you consider that. And if it is such that you would like to have a policy to allow that within certain parameters, we'd like to be able to come back and prepare an ordinance and, and have that on your next agenda so that we can address it, because we had many patrons that went, came to the-
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving well along.
Okay.
We don't need to force people to brown bag it.
But, but I think we did talk about some, some regulations, given that it's a, it's a public place, it's a family place, you know, not unlike at the ballpark where they, where they cut off the the beer in the seventh inning.
Certain time, yeah.
You know, maybe we cut it off an hour before it-
Right. And we'll look at that.
Ends or-
Absolutely. Whatever the event might be, that, you know, because we will give, we will issue special events permits, and then there will be a time period for that event to occur. And so we can then include that there's an hour prior to-
Give us a couple of different options.
Yes.
You know, I'm sure there's different cities with different ordinances on that, but you know-
Yes, we'll, we'll look at that and we'll, we'll work with legal.
And then there's the issue of BYO versus, versus being dispensed, number two. Do we know how many times DeKalb County has permitted this activity in the parks during the course of a given year?
No, I don't have a number on that, but I do know that they allow it.
Yeah.
And so that if you're, if you're running a pavilion, you can have it. If you're holding a special event, it's just part of the application. But I don't have a number for you.
I'm just curious.
All right. Get on that then. Thank you.
Yes.
Update on the quick, I think it's quit claim deed, didn't it?
Yeah.
Quit claim deed for parks. Do we have any update on that?
I'll give you very briefly. We've met with the Chief Deputy County Attorney on the, on the matter. We're working on it together. They've asked us to help prepare the quit claim deeds. They, they say they don't have, they don't have good description on them. We've, we've ordered title searches on some of the parks already. There, there's a couple of little things that they're continuing to work on, so we haven't ordered on all the parks at this point in time.
Can you get with Mike Adelson and GIS, or have somebody from your department get with Mike Adelson to kind of cross-reference what he knows with his parcel ID data? You know, there's some parcel-
We're planning on that, absolutely.
Right, so if we can make sure that he's in the, I want, I would like for him to be in the loop on all of this, if we could.
As soon as we get those quit claims, I did want to send those over to Mike, because we do need to check on what the county believes is what they're selling.
Right.
And what we believe are, are all the parts.
I, I would also say we should suggest that we look at some of these other odd parcels that are out there.
Like, like the one behind J-Maxx's house in Lynwood Park.
Yes.
Is that part of the park? It's like eight acres, or is it just a-
Mike's, Mike's-
An orphan lot?
Right. Mike's up to speed on all that.
Right.
I've talked to him extensively about that and the one at Blackburn. It's called Blackburn Two right now. It's across the street. There's a couple, and there's some other spots. There's one, you know, behind Apple Valley, or behind the MARTA station that shows, that's the library property, then there's MARTA property, and then there's a DeKalb parcel that I think has got a park designation, but it's not on the GIS map. So there's, there's a three or four spaces that, that I would like for Mike to, maybe we can get ahead of the game by, instead of waiting for him to get the quit claims, to kind of say, hey, ask him for this ahead of time.
We'll, we'll work on that.
All right.
It'd be nice to bring all that in now, rather than have to do it piecemeal. There's also the, the park that was built in the Brookley Development.
Correct, I was just thinking about that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's called Blackburn Two on the, on the, on the GIS.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. I thought you were talking about one and five. Great.
What, are the, are the buildings part of this quit claim deed?
The, the buildings are going to be part of it, and that's, we're working that out with them also.
And, and furniture fixtures, is that part of the quit claim deed? Do we have a clear definition with county about what for fixtures are?
We all know what fixtures are, and we all know the fixtures ought to go with the, with the buildings, but that'll be- that, that may or may not be part of the discussion, just as to depend on how hard you want to discuss it or how much you want to get those buildings.
I spoke with Bob Luntz about this, and he said he's waiting for you to get him some lists of stuff, because there was, now that we're stuff taken out of Briarwood, there, apparently, the, the, there were donated materials like swim lanes and some other things at Murphy Canler Pool that the neighborhood donated just recently, and they took those as well. So we kind of get to get a master list of things that, to him, and he, he's been great. Bob Luntz has been great helping us with any number of things, so if you could-
Yeah, I, I think that-
That's on you, basically.
Yeah. If we can get an email out to the Friends of Parks groups to ask them if there's anything that they can produce as a list that they know that, that private, you know, was private donations.
Friends of, and the Murphy Canler Swim Team, whatever, the Dinamoes, I don't know if they're called the Dinamoes, they're called something, but the Murphy Canler Swim Team. Marlins, yeah. The, if we can track that down and get something to them, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, I, I do believe that, my personal take is that, that a lot of the things, like when you have stands and bleachers for swim teams and pools, the, the citizens of, you know, as citizens of DeKalb County, certainly, it seems that we've paid for a lot of that stuff. I'm not sure how that would, you know, we would be all of a sudden excluded from the, the pool of people that had paid for that stuff.
I think we'll get it worked out. I do. And I appreciate your concern about that.
Yeah, well, it, it comes from the Parks people.
It does. It does. I've been hearing from them too. All right, so when, when will you expect something on this? Maybe next week or what?
I think with the lack of definition that the county has on what they actually own and don't own, it may be a very significant piece of work for a title searcher to piece it all together. So I wouldn't want to, with 13 parks and them not having any descriptions, except for, I think, one.
Okay.
We, we're gonna be the ones, if we want the property, and it's our effort, and it's gonna be our title people who are gonna have to match it all up and put it together to have some decent descriptions on it.
Okay.
Well, given that scenario, what would be the time element?
I wouldn't want to tell you until I know how hard it is gonna be for the title searcher.
I know that Dunwoody has, what, two or three parks, maybe? Maybe we could talk with somebody in Dunwoody's legal about how they did it. Would that be you?
That would be us.
Okay, all right.
One more, one more question about it. So leases on property that then would become Brookhaven Buildings and our parks, those leases transfer with the ownership?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're called improvements, so the improvements are, are tracked at a different cost, at a selling rate, so it's-
If, if persons have leased from the county, we take the property subject to the leases.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's one I know in, in Brookhaven Park, there's an issue there that-
Right.
That's sensitive. All right. Any announcements?
Yes, if I may, I, I'm just clouded under the term of announcements, but I do need to ask you if you would please, under the council agenda, if you would move to amend the agenda to allow for a resolution, which you don't have, which we just received a copy of, which is for the fire marshal. We have worked out, and we have gotten approval from the state fire marshal to have our own fire marshal. There has been a resolution that's been transmitted to us to use that. And so I'm, I don't have it ready for you because legal just got it today, because I just got it today. So I would ask that you all give authority to the mayor to execute that resolution. I expect that there will be some amendment or revision to our intergovernmental agreement with the county on fire services. This has nothing to do with protecting any improvements in the city from, you know, for fire safety, that that still continues. This is all about reviewing our own plans. The fire marshal would do that and would make those inspections so that we could cut down on the time and the complaints that we've received from our development community that they're constantly waiting for the county to, to review that. So this will all be done in-house. We already have a fire marshal, certified fire marshal on standby as a contractor that's ready to go. We hope to have that resolution finished and completed by tomorrow for the mayor's signature this week.
All right, so will just somebody remember to put that on there?
Where do you want us to move it to?
If that could just go under new business.
Okay.
And that would be number three. And that would be giving authority to the mayor to execute a resolution for purposes of the creation of a fire marshal.
And remind me again, at what point do we amend the agenda?
On our agenda announcements, is that right?
Yes, that would be under item F.
That's great news.
It is.
Right. We need to jump back to, under the work session agenda, for the upcoming agenda items. We did already talk about the concurrent variance language, so we'll be bringing that back to you for consideration. But we also have the stormwater maintenance RFP and the stormwater utility on-call standby contractor.
I'm here. Good afternoon. On August the 28th, we held a pre-proposal meeting. We, for these two items, 13-04, which is a proposal for contractors to submit, they will be submitting these tomorrow. So we bring it in this to you kind of early, just to kind of educate you about it. This 13-04 will be a maintenance crew contracting company that will be, consist of probably three or four guys that are qualified to work on stormwater projects. A small, minor, daily-type maintenance. Something you might see would be a catch basin replacement top, something like that. Or a clogged head wall or something sort of like that. At the pre-proposal meeting, we had 17 contracting firms show up. We made that mandatory so that we kind of weed out the, the last-minute low-ball prices because you don't get the quality of what you need for this type of asset. The 13-05 RFP, which is a standby contractor, we're gonna select two civil contractors and one pipelining contractor. Again, we had 17 qualified contractors show up for the pre-bid. Both of these RFPs will come, be coming in tomorrow at 2:00. We'll be evaluating, we have an evaluation team set up. We'll be evaluating to make a recommendation at the next hearing and so that we can move forward with some of the stormwater repairs that are, are needed right away that DeKalb County's not doing at all now, so. If you've had a chance to look at these, I can answer questions or anything like that.
You, you mentioned the first one was maintenance and the second one was standby, but the second one included just a pipeline or contractor? If, if, if a line is being replaced, a stormwater or a catch basin is being replaced, is that considered maintenance?
Not necessarily. The maintenance crew is usually limited in, to three or four guys. Small equipment that can be mobilized in a day-to-day operation. So a replacement of a pipe could be done with the maintenance crew if it's not real deep. If we have something that's deep, the on-call contractor has to furnish whatever equipment's necessary to do the job. The maintenance contractor would not necessarily have a piece of equipment to go deep.
You, you said, I'm sorry, you said two civil, I assume civil engineers?
No, the, what we call civil contractors.
Civil contractors, okay.
The two civil contractors were, that do the replacement type work.
That's where I was confused. When you said civil, I, I-
I'm sorry.
Jumped to engineer and, and it's a lot of design work. You have this going through 2015, is, is, I assume we can make that happen, that, you know, it's a two-year contract, is that something?
It, it's actually a, a year-to-year contract. We, at the city's discretion, we can cancel somebody's contract at the end of each year if we want to. We'll extend it through 215, 2015, if they're producing properly and doing good work. So if we have issues with them, you know, we can, we can cancel somebody's contract at any time. But as normal, all city budgets, you can only commit to one year at a time, so.
And I see that we're gonna provide signs, I hope they don't say Dunwoody, but I see we're gonna provide signs for the, all the, the equipment that's working in the, in the city.
Correct.
Question on the materials. You, you listed, we're gonna provide materials. There's a lot of, and, and I may be co-mingling the two because as I was reading through, I'm not sure that I differentiated between the maintenance and the, and the, the replacement contract. So I may be co-mingling what I was reading. There, there was a lot of discussion about us providing maintenance, excuse me, materials. There was a lot of bid information about materials, but we were somewhat vague in, in what materials we would provide. Is it, is it stone and pipe or?
On the maintenance one, we will use material vendors that we're setting up in the process now. On the on-call contractors, they're furnishing materials and equipment.
Okay.
So that's pretty much the distinction. There is, and the reason we do that is, is the maintenance stuff is more regular. It has a more regular list of vendors for the materials, and we can take advantage of the no-sales tags. So we, we run that through our vendors that we're setting.
So we just have two or three suppliers, they go pick up the material and show up at the job site?
Correct.
Okay.
They can make the order, as long as the vendor, when he submits his invoice to me, it has what site that it went to that I can cross-reference to a work order.
And they're responsible for figuring out the quantities and, and that they need?
Yeah.
The, mowing grass, if we take over some of the, and I don't, maybe we won't, as part of the, the stormwater utility, if we take over some of the floodplain properties, are we gonna include grass or is that gonna be done by the, whoever does the parks?
The, the intent was not, would not be do mowing under this. This is for more stormwater cleaning and maintenance. We would do, the anticipation is, we're still working it out with the parks, but we would have a separate right-of-way maintenance and contract in, which may be included in part of the parks' maintenance contract or a section of the park, as additional services in the parks' maintenance contract.
And I guess just one other thing, this may be a general policy that I missed. Background checks and, and other employee, I know we got the Ever five, but are we doing anything else with, with the employees that are coming in for the, for the, these contractors that are more out in the public? are more out in the public, and?
We have to rely on their e-verify stuff that we have through our purchasing department, plus these, these companies that are submitting, because we had the mandatory pre-proposal meeting, a lot of them I'm familiar with.
Does that do background checks with the employees, and, and, I don't know if we want to get into drug screening, but, you know, I just, I have a concern about, you know, the, and when we get into parks, I think they should be very high on the list, but, but with a lot of the crews that are out on the streets are going to be coming in contact at times with residents.
Well, I think them having a contract with the city, they have to abide by the city's rules as far as that is concerned.
Can I make a comment on that?
Thank you.
I've already had conversations with Mr. Rickstone, our HR director, and we're already looking at doing that.
Okay.
And that will be throughout, and we're already anticipating the park.
And I guess not, you know, not just for this, but for all, sort of an umbrella, if we have, if we have vendors that are more in contract, you know, contact with, with residents on a, what I'll call a random basis, not at City Hall, then, then I think we, we might want to look at, at doing that. We don't, we don't have a whole lot of control over some of these folks when they're out on the streets, and I'm not assuming that they're bad, but it does happen.
Well, unfortunately, you know, other local governments have experienced this concern that you're raising in the worst way.
Yeah.
Whether it's through recreation services, or some kind of act that represents the city in carrying out a service. And we've already, that conversation's already been had with our HR, and yes, we're going to start looking at that, and, and including volunteers as well.
Yeah.
Whether they're part of a recreation program, or they're helping in any way for the, on behalf of the city, we're definitely, and it's unfortunate, but we have to do that.
I just will point out that in these RFPs, and in standard, I know in the RFPs that we're doing, we do include a drug-free workplace certification in these RFPs. And again, if we have any complaints about an individual crew member with these contractors, I mean, we can fire them anytime, and we can also request that they remove a, they remove a crew member that's causing problems, and if they don't, you know, we can terminate their contract.
I'm sorry?
I think what you were talking about is going a little deeper.
Yeah, exactly.
And we expect that as a minimum.
I want to know beforehand, whether, you know, some people go bad, but I want to make sure that, you know, beforehand. The other thing, I guess, and this is a general question, is, I'm seeing insurance requirements bumping up to three and five million, we've got one million throughout, is that, is that standard language, or have we looked at, and I know it's not a whole lot more these days to have the additional coverage, but is that something we want to look at? Again, this is more general policy than, than proposal-specific, but...
That's a good comment, and we'll, we'll take a look at that, for sure.
I just, yeah. That's it.
Any other questions?
Yeah. At the very beginning of our city's creation, we talked about providing some kind of incentives for local businesses. Are we, do we still have that policy in effect from our purchasing department, where we give a?
Five percent.
Five percent bonus to the value of your Brookhaven's business, correct?
There's probably very few of these vendors who are in Brookhaven.
I know, but just in case.
I guess that brought another question. We had, somewhere in there, there was, there was discussion about use of a city maintenance facility. Are, are we telling them that?
Right now, I have told them during the pre-proposal conference that we have no city maintenance facility. If they wanted a space in Brookhaven for convenience, it was on their nickel.
So we haven't committed to a yard, okay, thank you.
So the proposals come in tomorrow at 2:00?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, at, how quickly then, before we make a decision?
I'm hoping to have this, the review committee have results back to me by Monday or Tuesday of next week, and so that we can get it on your next agenda for approval and signature, because I've got projects waiting.
And is C Click Fix the best way for residents to let us know of issues?
That, if it's stormwater-related, that or emails to me works best, and voicemails are fine, but emails give me a documentation, I put it on those.
Can you, maybe for the first period of time, put your email out there somewhere on the, on the website?
It is, I've, I've got some already.
Okay.
Want to just verbalize it now for the record, for people that listen to this?
Oh, carl dot carver at Brookhaven GA dot gov.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
We also need to go back under new business for the council agenda, please, item number two, which is to amend Chapter 14, the land development code. And this is for floodplain management.
We're forgetting about Public Works tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Richard's been too quiet.
I know. And this is, what this is, is this is, we are, I think we talked about this at the last work session, that we'll be bringing this forward tonight. The, we have made application to FEMA to be, I guess, a community on the, for the flood insurance. And as part of that, one of the conditions is, that they've asked, or requested, is that we pass our own floodplain ordinance. And the language that we're bringing forward, there was, when, back in December, when you passed the original DeKalb County ordinances, this section, chapter, or, Chapter 14, Article 4, was, we adopted DeKalb County's version, but Georgia EPD requested that we update it and produce our own version, and specifically to have reference to the specific maps and flood panel, panels that are impacted by Brookhaven. And so what we've adopted, we looked at what DeKalb had, there is a, the Water Management District has a model ordinance. There, they were really close, but there were enough updates in the model ordinance that we determined getting with Legal and, and staff that, to recommend that we update to the model ordinance, that way we're, we'll be good and clear with FEMA as far as going forward. They won't have any objection to the language in there, because it's one they've already vetted. And so we will get, to be able to enable us to get this approval. The risk is, is that if we don't get the approval by FEMA, then it could affect the ability for residents that have homes and floodplanes to get flood insurance, or affect the cost of their flood insurance anyway, at a minimum.
Now, does this include detention ponds and things, or is that another?
No, that's another section. This is only for, this only governs construction and the process for constructing, or the ability to, to construct or not to construct in a flood, within a floodplain, designated floodplain, and of course, what the definition of the floodplain is and all that.
Okay.
So it has nothing to do with detention ponds or retention, that's another code section in Chapter 14, or that's, that we aren't looking at tonight.
So this one is on the new business, under the ordinance 1141?
This is on the new business, and, and we are only adopting, of, of Chapter 14, we're only adopting Article 4, which is the floodplain ordinance. 1 through 3 covers the other development regulations that we're not looking at that tonight. That's a, a little bit more in-depth to review those before that gets brought, brought to council.
The, the last item, we need to amend the agenda to add it?
No, no, this is on the agenda already.
I know this one is, but, but the last item for the stormwater maintenance.
No, no, the, oh, the RFPs?
Yeah.
Those are, that was just an upcoming item that we're going to bring to council next.
Okay. So that's just a presentation?
That was just a presentation to let you know what contract we're going to be bringing to you for approval next council meeting.
Got you.
Anything more?
We don't really have any other business, except the executive session, I would like us to go into an executive session following the, the council meeting, and that's to discuss litigation and, and personnel.
Can we do it now?
No, the mayor needs to be here for that.
Oh.
Please.
So go into executive session, just at the, at the end of our?
At the end of council.
Regular council meeting?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And do we need to amend the agenda for that?
No, it's on the agenda, I just wanted to alert you to it.
Okay.
This is not on the agenda, so tell me if we need to, but I was hoping maybe you could just give us an update on the search for the Parks Director?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to do that. We have had, as you can imagine, a number of resumes that have been submitted, and, and I have, last week I conducted some initial interviews of what we're calling the top candidates. Later this week, I have another interview for a follow-up on, on one of the leading candidates, and looking forward to that, that meeting. My hope and my plan is that within the next week, that we will have an announcement for you of our new Parks and Recreation Director, with every hope that that person will be able to report for duty October the 1st. So that is the plan right now. We have commandeered Lindwood Park as our Parks and Recreation Office, and that will be the temporary home for the Parks Director. We have an interim Parks Director, a contractor that's working with us, who has 35 years' experience, retired from this profession, and so that will give us two people that will be in there. And of course, we have another interim director who's serving as the Parks Superintendent. So we'll be busy once this individual comes on board, getting them acclimated, but also immediately, their first task will be starting to develop a budget, because October is our month for the staff to work on the 2014 budget. But very excited about the qualifications of the, the top candidates that we've received, and who we've been interviewing, and, you know, we, we have a difficult choice ahead of us, but I'm, I'm confident that I'll be able to present to you the, the most qualified candidate, and one that is full of energy and ready to go. So looking forward to giving you part two of this, this discussion very soon.
It's exciting. Can you tell us how the, the transfer of the parks, if we work through the hitches of getting the keys, and did they change the locks, or?
We, we are in the midst of changing the locks, we were issued a key.
Good thinking.
One of the buildings is, remains locked, but we're, we're working on that. But, you know, aside from the disappointment from the neighborhood communities of, of the parks, where they did see furniture being removed and fixtures, it was, it was very disheartening for them, and they have been very good, they've been providing me some lists, and they did say some of the things that were taken out, that the county could have, because it was already old, but, but they did make a note, and I think we should make that note, and I, and I have shared it already with the Chief of Staff of Interim CEO Lee May Edman, and also the county manager, two weeks ago, when, when the furniture was literally being carried out through the doors, that I'd, I'd asked that they return it, and that where it was a fixture such as a scoreboard, that we expected that to remain, that had already left the building, so we're hoping it's going to, to come back. There were several chairs, about 70 or 75 chairs that were taken. I did remind them that their own CEO was soon going to be coming to hold the town hall meeting, and they might think about bringing them back, and, and I did say I wanted to believe in the good, and that they just removed them to clean them for the CEO, and that I was sure that they were going to bring them back. So they said, they've told me they are going to bring them back, but they're going to take them again. So that's still a, another conversation to have, but, you know, we're, we're really trying to better understand, you know, just the, the conditions of the improvements and, and what we have. And again, as soon as this Parks and Rec Director gets on board, they're going to have a boatload of things to do, and not only just get ready for a 2014 budget of a department that they're literally, literally going to build from the ground up, but also to ascertain the conditions of all of these buildings. And we did have the health inspector come in today and meet with one of our interim directors to talk about some of the standing water in some of our parks, and some of the concerns related to that. So, you know, we're on top of that matter. We need to get a full accounting of what these buildings are, and are they safe, and what the conditions are, and then what we're going to need to furnish it, since so much of the furniture has been taken. So that's, that will be in rapid order when, when we bring them on, bring this director on, and get going on that. We do have a maintenance crew that is on board, and maintaining the properties, grass-cutting tree limbs such as that, as well as the restrooms, and we're watching that and making sure they're able to keep up with that. There might be some adjustments to that, and if so, I'll, I'll let you all know. But we have found that some of the facilities are not in the best working order, so we, we've not received the improvements in the, the best order that we would like. We've already had a failure of one toilet, and it wasn't just because there was too much toilet paper in there, it was because it has a lift pump, and there was, it, it can't even be repaired, it has to be replaced. So that's, that's an issue that, that we're looking at. Just learned today that Briarwood Recreation Center, the air conditioner went out, and we don't own that building yet, so we're happy to let the county know that they need to replace their air conditioner. So that message has been sent, and, and these are the things that we're starting to find out, now that we've been able to get into the buildings with a key, and to get an accounting of, of what's there. But we'll, we'll, we'll get through it, and we'll, we'll work that out. Our law department is, is working, you know, with the county's law department to get these quick claim deeds, and, and we're really interested on how they're describing geographically, you know, by meets and bounds, these properties, so we can be sure that what we have, that we're, what we're going to get and what we're paying for is what we all believe to be Brookhaven Parks, and so we'll be looking at that very closely, and, and we have an excellent GIS director, so we'll be able to really pinpoint very closely, you know, what we believe is ours, and, and what we expect to be ours. The budget is there to accommodate the purchase, so we're, we're good there, so we'll be ready to render that check as soon as we can all come to an agreement on the meets and bounds of these properties. So it's, as I said to you, two weeks ago, we are definitely in triage mode. And that's what we are, it's, it's, it's just that.
Wow, great job, great job.
How are we doing assembling volunteers from within the different neighborhoods to assist with what we're trying to do with the parks now?
Well, I think before, you know, we bring on volunteers, we really have to have jobs for them. I don't think the volunteers want to clean the toilets, and I don't think they want to get in there and move furniture or bring in furniture. I think, you know, they're, what they can do for us, and what, how they can help us is, once we have a better understanding of the ability of each of these parks, and the improvements that are there, as to what they can do as far as programming, that's where the need for volunteers are, are going to come in, whether that's helping with registration, helping with answering a dedicated phone for Parks and Recreation, just to answer questions to the public, how do I sign my child up, where do I go? Has anyone thought of ballet? Well, great idea, let's see if we can find an instructor. That's where I think we can really, really have some benefit from, from volunteers. And then when we get into the programming aspect, especially for team sports, you know, we'll be looking for coaches, assistant coaches, you know, team moms, team dads, that, that want to be able to help, and then that's a whole host of getting the forms and getting people properly trained. I mean, you just, everyone likes to be a coach, but there is a way to, to work with children, and, and there are some excellent, you know, like half-day training programs that other cities require, that their coaches and, and volunteers go through before they start interacting with children, and, and sometimes how they interact with the parents of children, that can, sometimes they need to suit up and get out there on the field. So there's a lot to do, and even with what Mr. Iyer said, now we're adding yet another component, we're doing background checks on what will be volunteers, or who we're going to be dealing with, with residents of our community, whether they're a child or they're an adult. We, we want to know who's going to be the facilitator, and what their experience is, and what their ability is, and that they've gone through a, a training, and our rec director will be working on, on all of that.
Just as a housekeeping measure, there is, Oglethorpe University did that Day of Service a couple of weeks ago, and they chopped down a bunch, did it in coordination with a couple of parks, one next to the fire station on Dresden Drive, and one in Brookhaven Park. I know they, on the Dresden Drive, I've seen big, big piles that have been out there, I don't know if the county's coordinated for those to be picked up from the parks or not, but I know huge amounts of that stuff was in Brookhaven Park.
With regards to the park, I'd have to check with Brendan on that, I mean, I haven't heard. Typically with that, the entity that cuts it down is supposed to contract with the county as far as doing any special pickups, I guess if that is the parks, that's us, so we'll have to work with them on that.
Yeah, in, in the past, there was, DeKalb sanitation, just, you know, parks told sanitation, they had the cleanup day, they came by with, with the truck, and, and it went away. So we got caught. So we got caught, it was the week before we took over that they had the, the cleanup in the parks.
Yeah, I mean, we could follow up with sanitation too and say that since it was before we took over that they should pick it up. I know when we do that, the, usually I think it's either a $50 or $100 fee they charge us, the city, when they have special pickups, so.
Right, right.
Well, I've, I've already heard some great feedback from residents that, that they're thrilled that the grass has been cut, the garbage is being picked up daily, and the bathrooms are actually being cleaned. So I think we're already seeing some great improvement, and I appreciate you mobilizing the crews on relatively short notice, and it's looking good.
Thank you so much for, for bringing that up, and thanks to the team, we've, we've got a, a great team in place, and looking forward to getting their leader on board.
Yeah.
That's all that I have.
Mayor pro temp.
So, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
A move that we adjourn?
Well, do we adjourn because there's an executive session?
Not yet.
No, we're going to the executive session, the session after the council meeting.
So we're just adjourning this work session now.
Excellent, well, then I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning the work session? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is so adjourned.